What's up everyone, it's Theorian and Kalen here and we are going to be studying some amp script today. So join us, follow along with us. This is just a study session, if you want to watch, we're going to set the timer for 45 minutes. And that's how long we're going to take this session. So I'm going to start the timer right now for 45 minutes and that has begun. So I'm going to share my screen here. And I am going to continue going through this video by Cameron Robert and this guy is so good. So I'm just going to share this exercise that we're working on right now currently. And we're just going to share with you amp script exercise. Okay. Alright, so we're just going to watch this section right here.
Hey Joshua.
And there we are, looking good. 10, 10.
Hey Josh, how's it going man?
693. We've got thirty.
So Josh, we're, just to catch you up, we have created this table in amp script. And yeah, we're just still learning the, all the syntax and everything. So we're just finishing this up. And now we're about to go to the next exercise. So I'm going to just press play here.
3400, 33200. Has it looked against our results? That looks spot on. Alright, task number two complete. Okay, on to task number three. So we've had lots of data so far, good to hear. The chief learning officer has heard a bench report and was asked for the name of the.
Think your work can move faster?
You got the, you got the.
One work platform where all your people.
Last beam completed to be add to the report. Okay, so we have to amend our table to include the last beam completed name. It should look just like that, alright. So to look up the beams data extension to get the last completed. Alright, so back on our cloud page, let's have a look at our code. Now of course, we were looking up the cloud learner beams already, but we're returning back all the beams completed and not completed. We're going to change our code. So I think rather than using the lookup rows, we need to use the lookup ordered rows. So look up ordered rows, we need to add two more values here. We need to look at the ordered rows and how many rows. Now of course, we're going to look up as many as we can get. So let's just return back 100 rows. And we're going to be doing it on what value? We do have the completed date value. So completed date, we're going to return that value. And completed date descending, D E S C, because you want the most completed first and the least completed last. Alright, so we should get back all 100. Actually, we can put zero. There's any number that's less than one and we'll return back as many rows as possible. Completed date descending on our cloud learner. Alright. This now means we should be able to count those rows and the first row should be the most recently completed. So we can write another function in here. So we can instead say, if the row number that we're on is equal to one, so it's the first row, then this is going to be the very first course. Right, so we can set latest name to be equal to the name of this course. So how do you get a name of this course? Well, we've got the ID. So we're going to have the ID from this cloud learner beams. We're going to look it up against the actual beams data extension. And see here, we've got the beams data extension. So it's to a lookup function on beams. So it's going to be lookup. We'll look up the beams data extension, we're going to return back the name of the data extension. Where, what? Let's have a look at our data extension. We're returning back our name where the ID. Now the ID is equal to, of course, the ID. Now what's the ID? It's going to be coming from this set. So it's going to be a field within our row B set. We've got our field function here for points. It's going to be exactly the same format. We're going to want the beam ID. Now what's actually called? Should we get this right and go into our cloud learner beams? I think it was the beams ID as a number. Yes, it is, the beams ID. Go in and make it the beams ID. There we are. So we're going to be looking up the name of the beams ID where it's the first row in our ordered rows. And that'll be our latest name. Fantastic. And of course, we do want to try and reset the latest name just in case. So also go set, latest name is empty. At the very start for every single learner that we go through. And of course, we need to add some more to our table. So we want the latest beams completed. There we are, last being completed. So let's copy that text there. Back into our cloud page, latest being completed. Another cell at the bottom here with of course, the latest name, just like that. Alright, let's give that a go. Schedule and publish. Looking good. Designing for service, build and cloud. Designing for service, building cloud. Fantastic. That is part number three complete.
In this session, we're just going to try this. We're going to practice with this and we are going to see if we can do this as well. So I'm going to stop sharing and then I'm going to share another thing here. So I'm going to share my entire screen. So I'm going to share this screen. And then, okay, cool. So I'm just going to go back and forth on the computer like this between each lesson. So I'm going to back this up to what what we have right here. And now we're just going to follow along on this exercise. So exercise amp A O three. Oh, and by the way, if you don't have this exercise, if you want to actually see the same exercise, I'm going to copy this and put it in the chat here. And I'm also going to put the link to this video that we're watching in the chat. So you can follow along with me and Theorian. So there's those links. And basically what we're going to do here is we're just going to follow. So this is exercise. What is it? Three? Okay. Cool. So, hey Timmy, so you asked, where can you find the other amp script sessions? So that's a great question. Theorian and I started doing these videos yesterday. First, we went live in the Facebook group, the private Facebook group, Marketing Cloud Super Users. But honestly, we haven't been recording the other sessions. We, I've been documenting the journey on the blog post. So you can go check out the old blog posts, the most recent blog posts on Minute Admin. And I'll drop a link into here for that. But I've just been documenting the journey each day. But now we just took it another level up to just start doing these videos. So that is hopefully the answer to that question. But, okay, in this one, okay, so in the task yesterday that we did, we created the code to basically create this table, name beams and points. So if we go to Marketing Cloud and we go to Web Studio and Cloud Pages, this is where we're making this. We're putting this. So we created this collection right here under Cloud Pages called amp E O three Kalen to practice this. And then in this cloud page, it's going to load up. It's kind of like an email in content builder, like if you've ever been into email or content builder. So we have an HTML block here and I'm going to zoom in here just so we can see this better. So right now, I'm zooming out one. Right now, we have this cloud page which has, we have some HTML here. We have a table, the border is 10 pixels. We have our table rows, name, beams, points. Or sorry, one row, name beams, beams, points and table headers, the TH right here. Name, which you'll see right here. Then we have beams, table header, which you'll see right here. And then we have points, which you'll see right here. So Theorian, just let me know if anything isn't that easy to see just because my computer is a little bit truncated here. So.
No, you're, you're good. It's clear.
Okay. So we have those. So it looks like we're going to add in another header row here. Right? So last bean completed. So I'm going to copy this. And I'm going to paste it right here. And then what was the, it was last bean completed. So last beam. So now we should have that header row up here or that header. And then so that's the HTML side of it. Now on this part, what it looks like we're going to add to is we have set row to look up rows. Amp E O three cloud learners active one. So we're saying basically set row to look up the, look up the row from the data extension amp E O three cloud learners were active equals one. So we're good on that. And then we get into our, our loop. We get into our loop statement. So what changes here? So I'm just thinking of how am I going to put this together? So we have I just want to do this. For I equals one to row count, row of row do. So we're saying from one to the row count of row, this variable right here. Do something. Set beams to zero, set points to zero. And then what'd he say? He said, set latest at latest name to nothing. See, this is where Theorian, this is where.
So, so when, yeah, so what he, what he's saying here is to every time we loop through a row, we're resetting that namespace to show the latest name that's going to be provided when we pull that data. So that's why they left it blank. As we go through our loops.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, if you listen to him, he, he says, you know, we want to make sure each time we go through these rows, we reset that row before we return the data.
Oh, you reset, like if you go through this row.
For example, the last beam completed. I, I think that's exactly what he's specifying there.
So if you go through this one, clear it out and.
Before you put in, build your cloud business and then clear it and then you put in your cloud admin. Because it's just returning that clean set of data each time. And we want to make sure that's a clear space for it as the loop's processing through.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, so set latest name to nothing. Because latest name is going to be a latest name is going to be a.
Yeah.
I'm assuming.
Yeah, let's go look and see what's on there. The D E.
If we go to this. Oh, this one right here.
Yeah, that one there.
It's because we're grabbing from where's, okay, so are we grabbing from this? Latest beam completed. Cloud learner beams.
Let's see what we got here. Okay, start date beams, I complete date and points. So that's not giving us the name. Okay, that's name, points and ID. So that's a clear and simple D E there.
Okay, so set latest name.
Okay, so where are we grab, so, okay, so cloud learner beams, cloud learner.
I'm going to, I'm going to. Hey, that looks better than I thought it would.
No, it doesn't look bad at all. No, you're good. You're good.
Okay, so now I'm going to zoom in here so we can see this better. So set row B. So now we have this row B right here.
Yep, to look up ordered rows now.
Look up, now we're saying instead of look up rows, it's look up ordered.
Ordered rows, yeah.
And a specific order amp dash E O three underscore cloud learners underscore beams, comma zero, because you mentioned something about that zero starting, starting at zero when you're counting.
Yeah.
And then going by complete date in descending order. So this, the complete date. Cloud learner beams. Complete date. I guess we're pulling complete date from cloud learner beams data extension. And then we're, we're looking up the ordered rows. We're setting this variable row B to look up ordered rows from this amp E O three cloud learner beams data extension. Right here. Where completed and then I guess, starting at zero, I guess, yeah, starting at zero.
So our lookup ordered rows, it just, basically this is just us telling it to return a specified number of rows. So we're just telling it how much to return is, is what the developer notes say about it.
Okay. And filter based on complete date in descending order. Okay, so descending is what, from old to newest or newest to old?
I don't know if we've set that or if that's a variable that's automatically insinuated in the code. So I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I have no idea.
One second, I gotta plug my headset in.
Okay. Completely in descending order. Comma. They, based on cloud learner ID, which is this field right here. Based on cloud learner ID being equal to the field of the other data extension.
Basically, yep.
Of this cloud learners data extension where we only have four records. So those, these IDs have to, there has to be a match between these IDs and the other IDs. You see, that's the part that gets me is like matching.
This, I think this is where that charting system he was using comes into place. Because as he's building these out, he's live linking them so he can see him in just a basic breakdown of how he's connecting this information from one data pool to the next. I, I think this tool is definitely something I'm going to, I'm going to dive into and learn more about because I get what he's doing with it.
Hey, anybody who wants to do this, we're going to go back through this and talk about what Theorian's talking about, but this dbdocs.io. We were looking at it and it looked legit to pretty much structure your databases, at least to get a visual.
This section especially right here. And I know it looks just like content builder, but it's, it's fast and it's just, it's free brain, you know, it's for, it's brainstorming.
Yeah, we should try that out. We should do a demo on that.
Honestly, it feels like that's where as a team, we would start as developers, trying to link everything together. And once we figure out the linking, we can write the code much easier.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let us know in the comments if you think we should do a video on this dbdocs.io. And yeah, if we get enough comments or likes on that. And we might do a video on that. Um. Okay. Okay, so that's, that's something we need to do is we need to learn how to connect these databases with db dot I, dd, uh, what is it? dbdocs.io?
Yeah.
Um. And after that. Okay, so then we'll start to really see the connection between these data data extensions really easily. Okay, so we have this lookup ordered rows. And we're looking in the cloud learner beams at complete, complete date in descending order. And then we're searching on the cloud learner ID field.
Yep.
Where it's equal to the field, the same field where the two fields match basically. Field. Parentheses, row parentheses.
At row, at I.
At I.
And then give us ID.
Okay. And then we have, so we just set that variable.
Yep.
And then after that set, we have a four. For B equaling to, equaling one. So, okay. This is just another for loop.
It is. Yeah, we're, we're, we're growing the concept, making it messier and messier. Just think, think of how a bird builds a nest. It just starts off with a couple twigs. We're just creating a mess right now. Yep. So this is why when you have a developer leave your team, that's created code. There's a big freak out because they're like, has anybody actually went and looked and tried to understand what that person wrote?
Oh my gosh, yeah. You know, that's why a lot of these companies I feel like are hiring developers because they're like, we have a developer and this guy just left us.
And we need somebody that can just simply read what he left behind for us to figure out.
Oh my gosh, he or she, we got it, we got it.
Yeah, right, right, right. And, and just a shout out to Cameron Roberts because he just makes, um, he tells you, there's a hundred ways to do this. I'm only showing you one of a hundred ways.
It's insane when you think about it because it's like, you're like, you're sitting there. I remember when I first heard him say that and he was like, yeah, you know, there's a bunch of different syntax ways to say this in amp script. And I was like, dude, don't even tell me that. That man scares the crap out of me.
And honestly, it's just, it's just like developing slang in an original language. As you understand the construct, you start just throwing things together, you know, sentences together to make things happen.
True, true. That is true. Very true. We just have to learn the basics.
That's it, that's it.
The ABCs. Okay, so we're doing another for loop.
Yep.
Except instead of for I equaling to one, he's saying for B equaling.
At B.
For at B. It's like, it's equaling to one to row count of row B, which is what we just set right here. So, okay. So we set a, we created a for loop and it's that for loop said, go find this row. Set beams to zero, set points to zero, set latest name to nothing. And then it went back and it said, set row B to order, look up ordered rows. Then it said, now for this variable B, we're going to do a for loop to count row B now.
Yep.
And when it does that, do this. When it counts it, do this. So if, so the next thing is now we're nesting an if statement into the loop.
Into the loop.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so if B equals one. So this is our if statement because every if statement starts with if and then it has the, the thing like that is equal and then it has the then statement. If then, if this is true. If this, if the thing is true, then do this.
Yep.
Set later, the variable called latest name.
To the lookup that we've created, basically.
Equal to the lookup. Oh, look, but this is a different, this is a different, remember there's lookup and lookup rows?
It's not, it's not even lookup ordered rows. It's just a normal lookup.
But remember, this is the first function we want.
The very, this is the OG.
It's coming into play. Okay, so we have lookup. And remember, lookup has four statements to it.
Right.
Four.
Yep.
The first statement is go find the data extension. Amp E O three beams right here. Go find that data extension, copy that name. Put it in parentheses because it has to be able to read it. Because apparently I guess is parentheses, something that like to these data, to these coding languages, it's like, these are actual words to it now, like you're basically saying like.
Yeah, you're quoting in a sense.
And so it reads quotes as like actual words and sentences?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Where, I'll have to get the actual definition of how they describe that. But yes, that's, that's basically what's going on.
Hey, we're just going to go with the, this is what I'm seeing. This is what instinct is telling me. Name, ID. Comma, field. Now I'm going to try to read what this actually is saying. But field rows or just row. At row B. Comma, B. Okay, now I'm kind of seeing this. I'm like, at first I was looking at this and I was like, dude, what is this? What is he doing? But now I'm looking at it like I see it now a little bit more. So like well, I'm just going to make sure this saves.
Yeah, so commas serve an entire list of purposes within developing.
Commas do?
Yes, there's a whole page on commas in the developer guides. Yep.
Remember when comma was used as a divider?
Yeah, yep. So the, the overarching view is comma, the comma indicates the smallest interruption in continuity of thought or sentence structure. Aside from a few obligatory rules, comma use is mainly a matter of good judgment with ease of reading as the goal. So use commas in these situations as a developer. Titles, addresses and dates separating identical or similar words. And there's a whole list. I could just go on and on.
Could you put that link in the chat?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Hold on, let me, let me, let me log into StreamYard. I'll be right back.
Okay. So beams ID. Okay, so I think I'm getting this lookup. Look up that. Look up where in the data extension called amp E O three beams where the name has the I, same ID of the field that we can find in I'm just going to duplicate this. The same field that we have in. So we're looking at beams and then we're looking at, I'm going to just going to open the three that I've been working with. And then we have another data extension with okay, so we have the beams data extension, cloud learners. And then I'm going to open up cloud learner beams data extension. Open up those records. Okay, so we have a beams ID and cloud learner beams. Okay, so it's called beams ID. I guess beams ID column is the same as in this data extension. Okay, I'm going to let you in Theorian, here you go.
Thank you.
Yep. So I'm just trying to find the relationship between the fields and the data extension. So like in where's that? Okay, so we have this. Okay, so we have, I'm just looking at this line of code. Look up amp E O three beams right here. This data extension where the name, where the name and ID, where the, okay, so where the name of the ID field where the name of the ID field is equal to the same field from row B here. So this.
Yep, the lookup ordered rows.
And this. So. And, and this right here, this is what's so crazy. This is what's the craziest part. This right here is looking up. This.
Yeah.
So we're using this to look up this. And this is looking up.
Looking up that.
That's the part, it's like, it's like layers to this.
Oh, it's so many layers.
Okay, so.
And, and if you, if you really conceptually think about it, look at the output we're creating just for this simple task. You know, so there, it gets deep. It gets deep. I mean, we're doing basic HTML with amp script here. I mean, imagine that just a giant block of HTML sitting at the top and then all of our amp scripting come in and, you know, just to format it, make it pretty, give it color.
True.
Yeah.
That's when they pay the big bucks.
Mm-hmm. That's it. Creativity mixed with coding.
Dude, that's so true.
It is. I love this though. This is awesome.
It is. And you know what? I'm starting to get some pattern recognition and start seeing tiny little things every day that I didn't notice. And I love that.
Consistency.
That's it. That's literally it. It's just being on it every day.
And Josh, I don't know if you're still here, but we were, we were slamming our head against a wall one day, trying to figure out why we couldn't get things to work. And it was as simple as a, uh, top down design. We just had to drag one block of code above another block. And we were like, all right, call in the meeting. That's it.
Yeah. When you realize the reason why your code isn't working is because you didn't have it in the right spot.
The right spot.
Uh, it's. Yeah. It's frustrating, but it's beautiful at the same time.
It is.
It really is because it's like, if you know how to speak the language, it becomes, this world just opens up. It just completely opens up.
Completely.
Okay, so we have end if. Okay, so we ended the if statement. So this is the. If this happens, then set the latest name to look up. The amp E O three data extension. Uh, the name of the ID where that, where the field, the specific field equals the row that we found up here. Okay. And then end that if statement. And then now say, if not empty. The field. Row. Row B. At B. Has points. Or if it's not empty and it has. If it's not empty right here.
Right.
Then.
Set at beams.
So now it's another if statement because we just ended that if statement.
Right.
So now it's another if statement. If not empty field, set beams equal to add one. To beams. Set points to add. Points. Field row, row B. At B. Comma. Points. Okay. Now we're ending that if statement. Next, I forget what the next means.
Just telling it on, onto the next task, next move, what we're doing next. I mean, all, all of these, uh, these, we're setting conditions, you know, we're just like, hey, if there's nothing there, let's do this. If there is something there, let's do this. Um, we're, we're setting conditions on what we want returned. That's really what we're doing.
Hmm. It really is so simple when you just, when you put it like that.
Yep.
And then, so we're setting, okay, so amp script reminds me of SQL.
It is in a sense. I mean, it reminds me of C++.
And so I wonder like, I wonder if we could be doing this exact same stuff with SQL.
We, well, I, I don't know. We'll have to go back and look at the, uh, the minuscule details of amp script versus SQL.
Because if you think about it, what is this? This isn't really even amp script. If you think about this, like, I've seen this in so many different languages. I mean.
Yeah, code sets. Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like. Setting variables. Like looking up rows. I mean, maybe the specific syntax for amp scripts is lookup rows, but maybe like SQL is a different one. Maybe it's like sequel lookup. I don't know what it is, but.
It's, it's just another language, man.
It's just another language.
Yeah.
So basically our sequel, our, our amp script right near, right here is acting like sequel. Which is why I would say if you already know SQL, it's probably going to be easy to learn amp script.
Oh, for sure. It will be. It will be easy.
Yeah. Yeah, that is going to be a breeze, but all we're seeing here, so. And then HTML comes back in. So table row in the table row. Where. In the table row, we're going and we're finding the field. We're doing this amp script percent percent equals and then equals percent percent. So we have both of those. Then we have field. Row of at row at I. Comma name. Then we're looking up. Table, what is TD? I want to figure out what TD is. Yeah, TR TH.
Yeah, and TD, so table description.
Table, I don't remember. We'll look it up. But we're looking up percent percent, percent percent equals, percent percent equals. And then we're looking up beams. So we set beams up here. Beams is equal to zero. So I don't know what that's about to do. Set points to zero. Or now we're using points. And we're taking another set of. Now we're saying find us latest name.
Okay, so TD is table data cell element. So table data.
Huh. So is it the specific cell is like, is it this specific?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
And I actually had to find that in, uh, in, in HTML catalog and not in amp scripting catalog. And then kind of to piggyback back off of our SQL amp script, uh, just a really quick overview. It is honestly the difference in between the queries you can pull. Um, SQL select from and where I don't think we can use as an amp script. So it's just, it's a difference in languages. A difference in the function, the function of the languages.
Yeah. And I think, I think there's probably things we could like, with you saying that I'm realizing we could probably intertwine SQL.
Mm-hmm.
So like. Basically, if you know SQL, I think SQL is like the starting language for everybody to learn.
Right.
Because SQL is used in so much. I remember when I was in my data science program and they were having us use R, we were building R.
Yeah.
And working with R. And I remember him talking about this thing called SQL. And I was like, what the heck is a SQL? And, uh. That was when I realized SQL is used in everything, everything.
And it seems there's some, definitely some strong arguments in the community about amp script versus SQL. So that's an, that's another thing we could get into at a later date.
Oh, for sure, for sure. Um. Okay, tell me if I see, if I'm doing anything wrong here.
Looking, looking.
Okay, next to the latest name. At points at beams. Hi, comma name. That looks good. What did we miss yesterday? It was like a B, right? Like a row B. I think this was. Okay, next at B, end if. Okay, that looks good. That bottom section looks good. So we have the table together. So let's see, let's see if this renders.
See what we get.
I'm even going to press save just to make sure it's all so cool and ready to go.
Bravery.
Whoa.
Oh, I didn't like it. All right, all right. Well, we gotta go back.
Okay, I'm going to go through, uh, because dude, I tried this. So I tried this exercise. And I went to, uh, the ends of the earth trying to figure out, uh, not really, but. I tried this and the same thing happened. I'm going to just go to his.
Okay. Yeah, we need, we need his answer code block so we can just instantly refer.
Okay. I'm going to take this out of. Full screen and I'm going to make this smaller. And refresh. Okay, so. Okay, we got five minutes left. So let's see what we can do with this.
All right, we're going to proofread it. We're going to run it. Let's do it.
Let's do it. Okay. Proofread on deck. We're about to go in. Let's see.
Okay. Uh, you do ten, that, that, that's fine. No, that's fine. You just like the thick one. All right. TR TH name. Okay, we know, we didn't really change a lot of this up here, right? This is all pretty much still what we had before.
Yeah, this is all just the HTML.
Okay, this is our HTML we've been using. Okay, so percent percent at row set. Oh, we're, we got a mistake right off the bat.
What?
Set at row set equals lookup rows.
Oh. But yeah. In his video.
What's he saying in the video? Not to use that? That, oh, okay. Okay. Let's see. I mean, we, we've just done one proofread. So do you want to run and see what happens?
Let's see.
All right. Do you want to capitalize that? You think, do we need any, uh, does it need to be capitalized like our, our cheat sheet?
Uh, rows at, uh, or amp script, I don't think it's capital.
Oh, it's, it's thinking. Oh no. Okay, let's go back.
I will do it just, just in case, but I thought it was, I read somewhere where it wasn't case sensitive.
Okay, it's not case sensitive. Okay. Okay, so hold on. Let's see. Eagles like a froze. Okay. Are those double commas around amp O three learners or singles on, on his solution? And I, I see it. I see commas around the one too.
So in his, it's single everywhere.
Okay, everywhere. But we've never done that. So I don't think that's a, a difference. But he still has commas around the one at the end of that statement.
And he has. But see, he, he says row set right here.
Yeah, set at row set.
But honestly, if it's just row, it's like, it could just be row. You know what I mean?
Right.
Row, but I'm just going to put it.
But the one, he, he still has some brackets around this one at the end of that statement at set row set.
Which one?
The one at right past active.
Right here?
That one more. Yeah, it's a one right next to active. The one at the end of that sta- that statement.
Oh. Dude, is that it?
Man, I gotta, we gotta get you on the video game train. It's going to help you, help you with these details. I've been trying to get this guy to play video games really for so long. Let me tell y'all.
If this, if it's this, I'm playing.
Man, all right, let's go, let's go back, let's go back.
I was going to say, I'll get the Xbox right now.
All right, so active at one, four at I equals one to row count. At row. Do set at row beams. Wait. I don't even see set at row beams. Equals lookup ordered rows. Am I missing that somewhere?
Set row.
Okay, down note, keep, go below the four, the next statement below the four.
Oh, yeah. Well.
Set at row beams equals lookup ordered rows.
Let's see, let's see here. Let's see what he does. Set at row beams equal. To.
Look up ordered rows.
That's what I thought it was down here, this.
Is that what it is? Okay. Is it beams or B?
But he has a hundred. So I'm just going to copy that.
Okay, throw that in there.
Row beams. Equal to lookup ordered rows. Amp E O three cloud learner beams. And he has one hundred instead of a zero.
And he has that in quotes too.
The one hundred?
Mm-hmm.
No, the one hundred doesn't have quotes around.
Oh no, you're right. You're right. You're right. It starts at the complete date. So the complete date does though.
Complete. Date descending.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Cloud learner ID. Field row. That's the timer. All right, we're going to go over a little bit. We gotta get this.
That's, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, let's go. Okay, rows. Okay, at row, at I, ID.
Set. Points to zero, beams to zero.
Zero, set latest name.
Set last beam equal to zero.
And he has his latest name, right?
Yeah, he has latest name right here in the YouTube video, but he has last beam.
Beam here. Okay. And then, okay. And then four at row B.
So he changed the set right here from.
Of two of four. At row B one to row count at row beams do.
But row B, okay, row beams. Do, which was our row B here.
Yep.
Do. If.
At B.
Oh, he went, he went from. Look. For B equals one to row count. Do if.
If field. Wow, his answer is different for sure.
Way different.
Yep, so. If field. Row, yep, beams at B. Points. Greater than. That zero then. Okay. Then field. Wait, 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 wait. Okay, okay. Then if B equals equals then. Set at. Set at last beam.
This is where we're at and this is the block we're at.
Right, right, right. Yep, which, which you just finished. And then if the, if at B equals equals then set at latest name.
Last beam now.
Yep.
Oh my, I've been spelling last beam. Hold on. I've been spelling it with the capital. I need to just not capitalize anything. But I forget, it might not be case sensitive.
Yeah, it might not. Okay, and then, okay, so. At last beam, then equals lookup amp O three beams, name, ID. Field row at B. Oh, at row beam now. At the beams ID and then end if. Okay.
Now next is set. Points.
At points.
Equal to. And now we're setting the points.
Right, and he, he did, okay, so he did do that. We have that. We're set at points equals add at points field. Row, is it the same? I'm, I'm trying to break it down now. Yeah, it looks the same. Okay. And then set at beams equals add at beams comma one. So at beams comma one. End if. And then we go into HTML block. And then next at B and then HTML block. Yep. At last beam there. At points at beams. Field row, row, okay.
Okay. Let's see. Save.
Here we go.
Let's see. Oh.
No, no, it doesn't like us. Uh, I know what our next 45 minute session is going to consist of.
Yes, yes. All right, everyone. Well, thank you for joining in.
Yep.
Call it good on this one. And we're going to be back later on today with another 45 minute session studying over this. So turn on those post notifications, turn on those notifications to get notified when we, uh, when we come back and we try this again.
All right.
All right, everyone.
Take it easy, Minute Admin Crew.
Minute admin out.